Mr. Coon.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
And Ms. Yoon.
Here.
We have a forum.
Alderman Coon notified the city administrator several weeks ago that he would be unable to attend tonight's meeting in person due to employment purposes. Looks like he's somewhere not in Illinois. In order for him to attend remotely, the council must vote on whether to allow him to participate by video or audio conference. I'd entertain a motion to allow Alderman Coon to attend tonight's meeting. Salute. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick. Mr. Coon.
Yes.
And Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Ms. Yoon. Motion passes without my cave.
Okay, thank you very much. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. We'll start with Jonathan Bobel.
Thank you all for your time. I'm Jonathan Bobel, here with my wife Jenny Carroll. We live at 8 Oakview Drive next door to the proposed project that will be the subject of item 6.3 on the agenda. I know I'm speaking quickly, but I don't have a lot of time. As I stated at the zoning board meeting, I'm not trying to cause problems. I try to get along with my neighbors, but I have pretty serious concerns about this proposed garage and what it will do to our property, property value, enjoyment of the property. I sent you all a memo today that sets out these concerns. These are the same ones we expressed at the zoning board who voted unanimously to recommend the denial of the permit. I see those are being passed around. So I would urge you to reference that memo when having your discussions. I think it answers some of the questions you have. Sorry that I wasn't able to send it earlier. And I would also request that memo be made part of the record, either by motion or if I could attach it to the minutes by sending it to the clerk. And very briefly, two factors in the code I want to address that should be considered in deciding whether to grant a conditional use permit. And a conditional use permit is needed for this project because it is a second garage, a second accessory building on this lot. There's already an existing attached two-car garage. And the first factor, which is really the most important, is, this is found in section 153.078D2, "The conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood." And when you think about property value, when you think about enjoyment, you have to think about the character of the neighborhood. Jenny and I have been in this house for over 12 years. We have two kids that are growing up there. This neighborhood is pretty special. They're big, open lots, there are long sightlines, there are dozens of hundred-year-old oak trees. It's why we moved here. I remember when we moved in 12 years ago, our realtor told us, "You're paying for location," and he was right. From our backyard, about six months out of the year, when things aren't too green, we can see the river. If the project goes forward, that view goes away, which hurts our property value, interferes with our enjoyment of the property. And it's not true just for us, it's true for anyone else who lives in the home after us in the future, and every family who owns that home. Attached to the memo that we submitted, you'll see on the final page, there are some photographs which I think will help you understand. I would invite you to review those. And I think it's also important to note, these sightlines are written into our covenants. I understand the council isn't here to enforce covenants, but it's something to consider when you consider property value. So if you have a violation of the covenant that's not being enforced, it's going to hurt your property values. According to our covenants, sightlines to the street can't be obstructed according to our covenants. That's, it doesn't limit it to front or back. If this project goes forward, we will not have a sightline to our back street. There are five houses on our side of the street, all of them have sightlines to the front road, Oakview, and to Fissler, which is on the backside of the neighborhood, the exception of one home on the very end that borders on Bridge Street. They've chosen to plant trees in their own backyard, obstructs their own views, no one else's. And so, again, if the project is approved, we don't have that sightline to Fissler. We use that sightline every morning to watch for the bus coming up Fissler, kids get on the bus, finish your cereal time outside. And, you know, Mr. Homan mentioned his materials, there are four homes that have fences of some type. None of those obstruct any sightlines. They're very small fences, I think most, if not all, are a few beams. There is one around a pool that is, I think, a metal slatted fence. It doesn't obstruct anything. So that's the first factor. It's going to harm our property value, it's going to harm our enjoyment of the property. And again, it's explained further in that memo. And the second that I just want to point out quickly, also in the memo, it says, "The conditional use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located." This proposed use doesn't conform. And I think based on the proposed use here, this is not a garage, it's a storage shed. The Homens have two cars, they already have a two-car garage. This is going to be used for something other than storing cars. It is a storage shed as defined in the code, it is not a garage. The application says it's a garage, but if I, you know, construct a garage and then I use it to grow cannabis or use it for some other purposes, that's not a garage, it's for some use other than storing automobiles, which is how a garage is defined. And it also doesn't comply with the code because the setback here should be 10 feet, not five feet. What the code says about interpretation is that, well, let me just say, there's a conflict between, in the residential suburban district, the setback is 10 feet, and in the accessory building section, the setback is five feet. So we have potentially a conflict in the code. What the code says about the interpretation is that when you have a conflict, you use the more restrictive provision. And so that would be 10 feet, so that should be used. And I want to urge the council to consider the purpose of zoning, and a resident chimed in on this last time, it wasn't me, but we have zoning rules to ensure orderly land use so that we can rely on those rules and knowing how our land and our neighboring land is going to be developed. Every time we allow a use, there's going to be an impact on surrounding uses. And I think it's important to note that Mr. Homan is asking for an exception to the rule, a use that is not normally permitted. And the residents of Oakview Drive, we're not going to be here in 100 years, but the neighborhood's going to be here. And if we allowed people to buy a property that's not going to suit their needs, and then they can assume that they're going to ignore the zoning code rules and seek an exception, then the zoning code becomes meaningless. I'm happy to answer any questions either now or when the agenda item is addressed. And if there are none, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Jenny Carroll. Or Jennifer, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Carroll, or Jennifer Carroll, and I am the other homeowner at 8 Oakview Drive. My husband, John Bobel, just spoke. Let me start by reiterating John's comments, that we take no joy in being here and opposing our new neighbor. We love our neighborhood and have good relationships with all of our neighbors, and one day I hope we can say the same about our new neighbors at 7 Oakview Court, the Homens. As John mentioned, we fell in love with this house immediately when we first saw it over 12 years ago, and the park-like setting of our neighborhood was a big part of that. For me personally, it was a happy medium between the homes I grew up in in the country, where we had endless views, and my desire to live in town. As you can see from the map that we provided, we share the Homens' view of the Sangamon River and the surrounding woods. When I say that this view of the river gives me life during the dreary winter months, I'm only very slightly exaggerating. Sunshine on that river is everything. Oakview Drive, or sometimes it's called Lockwood Estates, is a truly unique neighborhood in Monticello, and everyone who visits our home says just that. It's not like your typical city neighborhood where you have neighbors directly beside, in front, and behind you. The lots are laid out to work in conjunction with the beautiful scenery. Most of our neighbors have elongated backyards and scenic views. Only those few of us who live on the corners or the bends in the road have a neighbor behind us, and even then, we all have a significant portion of our backyard that still maintains that view. From the aerial view provided, the Homens' existing garage looks nearly as wide and slightly deeper than our own two-car garage, which I measured at 24 feet deep and nearly 24 feet wide. The La Crohn's, the former residents of the Homens' house, who lived there for over 30 years, had two SUVs, a large one and a mid-sized one, plus a large lawnmower that we all have to have in that neighborhood to deal with the leaves, and they were able to live comfortably with that garage. Given how settled the neighborhood was, and that the La Crohn's had lived there for so long, I never dreamed that someone might come in and add another garage or large storage shed on the property, let alone as close as possible to my backyard and nearly entirely blocking the view that we love so much. When John first met Mr. Homan the week they bought their house, Mr. Homan informed him he was going to put that second garage beside our property. Heartbroken, we wrote Mr. and Mrs. Homan a letter, I'm sorry, asking them to consider an alternative, like a smaller storage shed, which we have in our yard for our lawnmower, or utilizing the storage facilities that are just across Old Route 47 from our neighborhood, like many of our neighbors who have RVs use. But they never reached out to talk to us. So here we are today. In his comments and the memo we sent, John shared more of the technical arguments about why this conditional use permit does not meet the standards in the city ordinances. But for my part, I would like to ask the council members to put themselves in our shoes and consider how you two might be heartbroken to lose such an important part of your home. Yes, it diminishes our property value, but mostly it diminishes our enjoyment of our beautiful home and our truly unique neighborhood. Therefore, we ask that the city council uphold the unanimous decision of the zoning board and deny this conditional use permit for a second garage at 7 Oakview Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. John Frericks.
Good evening, Mayor. Alderman, Alderwoman. I am here to speak on behalf of budgets, specifically number 724, the funding that is allocated for what is currently considered Oberheim Park. So a little background, I've been, lived in city limits of Monticello since about 2014. In that time, I served on the Monticello Planning and Zoning Board for about four and a half years, and then city council for two years, which in 2021 I had to resign because I moved just outside of city limits. So I guess some people could say I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight, but the fact that my wife works for the schools and my kids do go to school here, I am also on the Monticello Recreation Foundation as the vice president, and also coming from a standpoint of parent coach for kids who have played sports within the Monticello Recreation Department's sporting that they have throughout the year. So I also am a real estate agent for 12-plus years. So I do help a lot of clients that buy and sell in communities, and we understand the amenities that are provided that give their children opportunities that they might not otherwise have. And that's a big standpoint, I think, that I'm coming from, on being very much for the approval for that funding is, is number one, from a parent whose kids play in recreation ball, but the fact that I also coached peanut league out at the landfill area, and then also four years of rec softball at the forest preserve for my daughters. I can tell you that it is an amazing experience because the rec softball that I had to coach is a pretty large range. It's from about first grade to fourth grade, and at least half the girls that come and join and play in the summertime have probably never thrown a softball, not ever. This is an opportunity for them to be able to play a sport, be a part of a team that maybe they wouldn't otherwise have that opportunity. I was, had the very fortunate opportunity, had to have Mr. John Bobel as an assistant coach, and he could speak to the same stance. It is just, it's very rewarding to see those girls, really, and boys, in all the other sports, but I'm always speaking to the one that I coached, really progress from the start of the season to the end of the season, having never played a sport. And that really wouldn't be possible without the hard-working men and women of the rec department putting together the soccer, my kids also play, but also all the other sporting events that they put together. So to have an area that we can really take pride in and really help to develop a lot of these kids that want to learn what it's like to be a part of a team, or what it's like to learn a sport that they've never even touched, I think this is an investment in our community. I can't speak to anything beyond that, you know, any impact it may have on the community, income-wise, on other stuff, but primarily for kids, that it really gives them a great opportunity. When I was on the zoning board and also on council, Alderman Coon and I, at the time, before it was Oberheim Park, really dove in deep with the committee that, at the time, the mayor had appointed, that I was a part of, and we did a lot of research. And it has immense impact on the community. And I think it's great for the residents to be able to have a place to go, and we're literally looking at the bare bones here, fields and some fences. Additionally, as I said, I'm on the foundation, Monticello Recreation Foundation. You know, we are not a foundation that's going to raise millions and millions of dollars for this project. It's just not what we do, it's not where we are. But we definitely would be very interested in seeing where those are opportunities that we could fulfill, you know, some stands, a scoreboard, you know. We just put on the smoking octane event, you know, could that be a bit of space for that? I don't know. But I think there's some opportunities for the foundation then to also use that for our community to leverage and do some fundraising for the park as well. So, again, I'm all for it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you would have afterwards as well. So I appreciate your time.
Thanks, John. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated November 13, 2024 through November 25, 2024. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, November 12, 2024. Budget report, October 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hey, the mayor's report from November 25, 2024. The Investor Coffee for the Sangamon Valley CEO program is tomorrow from 7:30 a.m., excuse me, to 9 o'clock PM, AM, not PM, AM, at Art 3, Art 2. As the city of Monticello is an investor, I encourage you to stop in to meet the students. Winner of the 2024 Monticello Boot Camp New Business Grant, Balance and Beauty, will be having their spa grand opening and open house from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Friday, December the 6th. Stop into the remodeled location at 214 West Washington Street, and welcome Melissa Good to downtown. The Allerton Holiday Glow kicks off at December the 6th at 5:00 p.m. with lighted trails, music, and food. Volunteers are needed for the Lunch with Santa Peanut Butter and Gelatine Sandwich Making. Do I speak five minutes already? The Monticello Christmas Parade and Lunch with Santa events. To sign up, visit the Monticello Chamber website. And the Monticello Christmas Parade will be Saturday, December 7th at 11:30 p.m. And city aldermen have participated in the past. If you are interested in participating, please let me know because we will get enough vehicles cleaned up that everyone can do so. Just let me know after the meeting, okay? If that's possible. And that's my report this evening. Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2024-53 authorizing the lease of property 315 East Center Street, Monticello, Illinois. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 2024-53 simply renews the lease currently in place with the address 315 East Center Street with the small hand, Piatt County Cares Incorporated. In the memo, I spell out a lot of the things that this organization provides to not only residents of the city of Monticello, but throughout Piatt County. And some of these numbers, all these numbers were provided by Christina San Antonio, and Christina's with us tonight that might be able to help me fill in some of this stuff. But some of these numbers are just extraordinary, 4,000 to 4,500 diapers per month, and additional infant needs. The list goes on and on and on. Helping with economic hardships, the food pantry provides over 1,400 pounds of prepackaged food, including meat, bread, eggs, and cheese each month. You can see the list just goes on and on with all the amenities that this organization provides. So this ordinance will extend that lease for an additional two years. That's kind of the direction the council wanted to go at that time, so it is recommended the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2024-53 as submitted. Christina, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I can answer any questions.
Okay.
We do provide our services for all of Piatt County. We're increasing in numbers every week. The need has just, in the last year and a half, grown exponentially. Been partnered with many organizations throughout Piatt County, including the Urban Hospital, which allows us to provide a number of diapers every week. We are income-based, but because we don't have any federal funding or state funding, we can kind of broaden that for people who have special circumstances. So we're just seeing a big increase in the need right now. And we so appreciate the use of the house. It's perfect for what we do.
Anyone have anything to say? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-53?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Really appreciate it, Piercy. Okay. Resolution 2024-54, a resolution for a conditional use permit for a multifamily structure on a parcel zone RD urban residential, city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Advocate Tim Scott, the owner, is seeking the conditional use permit for a multifamily structure on the parcel zone RD urban residential at the property commonly known as 927 North Front Street, Monticello. The admissible code of ordinances, section 153.017A, allows such a structure once conditional use permit is issued. Granted, the conditional use will not detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. A vicinity map, aerial view of the property, and a copy of the public notice, the meeting motion, and agenda were included in the packet. A public hearing was held at the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Monticello Planning and Zoning Board on Monday, November 18th. The following is a summary of the comments made to the PZB during the hearing. This is just, in general, the people that were there that made comments. They said they did not want a development to impede the normal traffic in the neighborhood. They did not want the building to be out of character for the area. They did not want to see an open-ended conditional use permit for the number of units. There were parking concerns and the size of the structure. I commented that all those things would be addressed during the design phase of the building. Mr. Tim Scott did not want to put all of his eggs in one basket if there were conditions put on either the number of units, but the size is definitely restricted by the flood plane that you're just not able to change. So his desire is to get the largest footprint he can with multiple, multifamily units. I think maybe some of you are aware of where this property is at, but it's a property that's going to have to be torn down as its current condition is unlivable. The board reviewed the documents associated with the project, they heard the public testimony, and unanimously recommended approving the conditional use permit. Attached was a copy of that PZB motion. It's recommended the city council discuss and approve the conditional use permit with or without conditions for a multifamily structure at 927 North Front Street, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois, at today's meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Go ahead. I'm looking, I'm having a little issue because I'm looking at the map. I'm trying to see where 927 is on the, and it's not marked, I'm sorry, not clearly. I hate to be that way.
No, that's fine.
Is it, on the right-hand side, is the large double lot kind of in the middle of the photo?
It's not in the middle. So in the very middle of the photo, you'll see the tracks, and then right to the left of that, you'll see kind of like, I don't know, a creek that crosses through that farm, into that farm ground, splitting those two units.
Okay.
And then right to the north of that, where you see kind of two grassy areas, it's that property there. It's Mr. White's old property.
Okay.
It's that White House that's been abandoned for a better part of 10 years, as far as I'm been involved.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Jim, this is Mike.
Yeah.
Will the council have an opportunity to review and approve the plan once it's in place? I mean, obviously, we're just voting on whether to issue the conditional use permit, but we'll have an opportunity to look at and approve the final plan for, is that correct?
Well, not really. What will end up happening is the plans will need to meet the criteria already set up in the code of ordinances by way of our design manual and all the height, size restrictions, flood plane, all those things. It'll just have to meet those.
Okay.
Meet that criteria.
Hey, Mike.
Yep, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-54?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, I'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-55, a resolution for a conditional use permit for a detached garage at 7 Oakview Court, city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Hey, thank you, Mayor, Council. The background is, the applicant, Mr. Daniel Homan's here, seeking conditional use permit for a detached garage on a parcel zone RS suburban residential. Mr. Homan requests a conditional use permit following the City of Monticello zoning regulations, section 153.02C1B, which allows for such a structure once a conditional permit is issued following the review and approval by the city council. Granted, the conditional use will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the normal and orderly development of the improvement of the surrounding properties. A public hearing was held at the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Monticello Planning and Zoning Board on Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. The following, again, are a summary of the comments made to the PZB during this public hearing. Issuing the conditional use permit would be detrimental to the surrounding properties. Two, several homes in the neighborhood have detached accessory structures. Sightlines mentioned in the subdivision covenants would be affected. The planning and zoning board should not take into account what covenants are as they are private to the residents of that subdivision. The applicant did not need an extra garage based on the car's own. Something other than cars would be stored in the garage, in this garage, excuse me. The application for the conditional use permit specifically states a private The application for the conditional use permit specifically states a private detached garage. During the, during the testimony, I, I did comment on some of the things that I said that the zoning, planning and zoning board shouldn't render their recommendations based on what covenants are because they're specific to that neighborhood and doesn't really involve the citywide ordinances. I said that it was consistent with the neighborhood because I, I'm not sure what Mr. Holman put in his letter, but my observation when I went out there, there are two other properties that have this very specific setup where there's a attached garage and a detached garage along with it. So that's how I came to the determination that it wouldn't detract from the laws and the use there in that neighborhood. After all that was said, the board reviewed the documents associated with the project, the testimony of the public, and unanimously recommended denying the conditional use permit. Attached is a copy of that PZB motion, a vicinity map, project exhibit, the applicant's, Mr. Holman's comments to the PZB hearing, and resolution 2024-55. It's recommended the city council discuss and approve this conditional use permit with or without conditions for a detached garage at 7 Oakview Court, city of Monticello, Payette County, Illinois, at today's meeting.
Comments or questions?
It starts out, what's the height? Do we know?
Tell us your building, sir.
16 feet.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it was 16, yep.
Just, I mean, just, there's a couple of questions I have. First, two. Why are we getting this if it's been denied by PZB?
PZB is only a recommending body. Actual decisions left with the council.
Okay, I get, that, that makes sense. Thank you so much. Secondly, is that the only place on your property you can put that garage, sir?
Relatively speaking, yes. There's the, the plat, when it was filed for the subdivision created, 50-foot building setback along Fissler, which basically runs from the one corner of my house all along Fissler. And then there's electrical line running just inside that on the property. And then the other setbacks pretty much restrict the area in which I can do something.
So, so you're asking for permission to do this, but not to change the other issues to make, to make it where it's not in their sightline? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I, I asked for this because it's was how I, I guess I was presented. I, I didn't think about trying to ask for variance under 50-foot building setback. There are oak trees, and, and I don't know how, how it would lay out there, but it would require more drive, but. So it, it could potentially be a possibility. Then underground electrical service would be an issue. It pretty much splits that area.
Anyone else?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think that the, the building really conforms with the, you know, sort of the ambiance of the neighborhood. And I think there, there, to be good stewards of what is a unique neighborhood, I don't think this structure really fits. And it, it does cause, you know, inconvenience, harm, or whatever, to existing homeowners, and I, and I would not recommend it.
I want to go forward with that, though. I mean, we don't have complete drawings of what actually is going to be done. So, I mean, things can be changed, and that, things can actually happen to that site. Mike?
That is true, but they're asking for a conditional use permit, and so this is an exception. This isn't, you know, a, a regular permit. So it's up, I think it's up to the council to, to react to what's being presented. You know, if there is, in later time, if there's a, an alternative solution that they can bring and, and apply for that use, conditional use permit at another time, and we can evaluate that.
And going forth, if we did approve it, would you actually approve your design to where you don't disrupt the neighborhood? Asking you.
Yes, sir. Oh, I just want to ask for clarification on what you mean by disrupt the neighborhood.
I mean, I don't know. So it doesn't look rough to them, so it's not just some brown
No, I, I, it'll, it'll be a nice-looking garage, you know, just kind of direct to the front of it, so from the.
Oh.
Oakview Court, street would blend in with the house.
It'll blend in with the neighborhood?
Yeah.
It'll be coherent? Okay. Okay.
There is space on here for the council to make recommendations for conditions. I left some space in there for that very thing and the conditional use permit itself, in the event that something like this were to happen.
I don't think that it's the issue of how the structure looks. I think it's the existence of the structure itself. That would be the thing that would be disrupting the sightlines. I think that was your concern.
Is that, if that's correct, when it comes down to it, it's just, it's going to be in the way that you see in the river? Is that what I'm, is that what we're understanding?
Yes, thank you.
And did I really see that it said he doesn't need it because he's got only two cars and he does need another garage? Is that really what I saw?
That was in the comments.
It was in the comments? And that's, somebody actually said that?
Anyone else? So my, my question to Jim, maybe you don't know. How do I phrase this? Is there a motion to? What, do you want to support the planning commission, or do you want to go against it? That's, I guess, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the, the only, so the, Mr. Holman, it didn't necessarily want to bring up the fact that if he attaches it to the house, he can build it right where it's at. It just ends up having to be a bigger footprint, and then it doesn't go through PZB. It would have to meet the 10-foot side yard setback. There's that option to do, and he's considered doing that, depending on what the action is here today. So he just wants to consider all things, since he already paid the $300, to go to the PZB and then to council to, to ultimately salvage an oak tree that's there, was his ultimate desires.
So just to clarify, you're willing to put this against the house, attach it to the house, right?
I'm willing to attach it to the house.
And that would avoid their problem, correct?
No.
How would that not avoid their problem of the sightline? How would that not avoid?
It's, it's still going to be in that same general.
Still on that side of the house, right?
If I'm looking at this, and we put it against there, that broadens the whole area, doesn't it? Am I looking at, am I crazy?
No.
It does help.
It would help, but without a, no, it's a problem. I don't know how much, but it would depend on where it would be.
Here's, here's what, here's what I, just as I'm looking at it, to be brutally honest, this, this man's property, right? You get to do what you want to do on your property, and I understand there's covenants, but you guys brought, this came to us, so we have to deal with this now. If you want, if you, to make better neighbors, it would be probably better to put it, attach it to the house so they get, still have some view, and you can build a bridge to each other. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm willing to attach it, but I'm not willing to set it exactly, exactly next to the house.
That's, that is something else that would, that can be done at another meeting, but so.
You're right, you're right. But if it's attached to the house, council doesn't act on it, it's just.
Sis, yeah. Takes us out of the equation, exactly. Deny this, then they, then that moves to that situation. They have to, they have to work that out.
I think it would still need a conditional use, even if it's attached to the house and we believe a second garage, now it's a second accessory. We, we don't, it's, what we limit is the square footage of the lot to.
How much plus?
How much of the lot?
Everyone's looking at me blankly, and I'm looking blank.
Well, we're staring right, right, right at you right now.
Can you speak to the, the issue with the setback either being 10 feet or 5 feet?
So the city's determination by way of our attorneys is that if it's part of the main structure, we maintain the 10 feet. If it then becomes an accessory structure, such as a detached garage, then it has to maintain a five-foot setback to the side yard.
Like mine.
Like his, everywhere. That's, that's what we've done. That's what we do.
Understood. Thanks.
Yeah.
If it attaches to the house?
It's got to be 10 feet away.
Other variance needed for the.
No, no, because he would, so if, if he attaches it to the house, he loses an oak tree, and he move, if he didn't have this oak tree there, he would move it 10 feet to have it closer to where he wants it anyway, but there's a tree in the way, and he wants to stay on the drip line. So if, if, if we require him, if, if this fails and we require him, oh, you got to attach it to the house, well, then tree has to go.
Right.
And it's a big tree, I think.
It's a big tree, because then he does have to maintain the side yard setback of 10 feet without getting, coming back for a variance.
Is there a motion? Deny? No?
Yes, we approve.
Is there a motion to approve a resolution for conditional use permit for a detached garage at 7 Oakview Court, city of Monticello?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Can we move to approve with conditions, or is that a separate?
That's good. That's a good point.
Do you know what conditions you want to attach?
Yes.
Height, maybe?
Well, I can't, I, I'm just speaking for you, Mr. Holman. I don't know. I can't imagine he'd do something ridiculous to do this.
Height has to be 16 feet, yep.
17 or less.
Height means regulated by the code.
Oh, okay.
So height and overall square footage to area of the actual lot is governed by code. If there were anything that were going to vary from what's already in the code, then need to come back and ask for something different.
Okay.
But if he attaches it to the primary structure, then it becomes the higher height because then it becomes part of the primary structure. And it sounds like a convoluted mess, but that's what ends up happening when you attach things together.
And then going forward, is what she said in regards to conditions, what are your guys' concerns? Like, do you not want to see the structure?
We're going to see the structure wherever it's going. It's going to be in our sideline. It's going to block.
Okay, so it's not.
There's no solution where it's built on that side that's not, that's going to address our concerns. It's just not.
So there's no wiggle room at all for you?
Right.
That's what I, there's no wiggle room at all for you then, is there?
Well, I, I'm, possibly there's a solution. I can't think of.
Well, this would be an awesome time to, to, if there's, if there is a solution, this would be a great time to talk about it, so we can make things work out well. The reality, I mean, if, if there's other properties, at least two other properties that have the same type of building on, in this neighborhood, it seems just to me, from sitting here, it doesn't seem fair to say no to him. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand.
I understand your, your, I, your sightline. I get that.
But the other two detached garages are not blocking anyone's sightline. They're not deteriorating the, the character of the neighborhood, which I think is, they are blocking, they're in their own backyard, and there's nothing that they're blocking, right? It's different than ours, where I sit and I look out that back window, and I drink my coffee, and I see the river, and that's important to me. I appreciate that's property value to me. And it has been for the last 12 years. It's one of the reasons that we bought the house. So, I mean, I understand, and again, I'm not trying to cause a problem, but what Mr. Holman's asking for is an exception to the code. And if we allow all of these exceptions, if everyone wants to, he bought the house all the summer, and he comes in and says, well, I want this exception because I bought this property that doesn't fit my needs, then what's the purpose of a zoning? Why do we have exceptions, right? And this, this property has been there for 50 years. It's going to be there for hopefully another 150 or more. The river is going to be there. The sideline is going to be there. I'm not just talking about me. I'm talking about the character of the neighborhood. And I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but it's beautiful, right? We all have big, open sidelines. Everyone on our side has a view of the river. Built, that would be with the exception of us. And so when we're talking about the other neighborhoods, well, they have detached garages. Why can't I have that? Everyone else has a view of the river. Why can't I have that, right? And so that's my concern. It's very important to us, and it's very important to our property value and our enjoyment of the property.
That's nice. But I mean, you can also have that if you wish, and you can go to PZB for all of that. I mean, if you want to go ahead and build another structure, you need to understand that that's how we zone things, and that's how we do things. It's his property, so he's allowed to build on it if we approve it. So, I'm sorry, your, 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 your view on such, yes, that's your view, but you need to understand it's his property.
I understand.
There we go.
Seems like, no, I'm, I'm.
She was about to gabble me.
Just, no, I wasn't going to gabble you. I was just going to say, we've talked around the issue, about all we can talk around the issue. We're not making any progress. So there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Yep.
To approve resolution 2024-55, a resolution for a conditional use permit for a detached garage at 7 Oakview Court. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Did you say now?
I did.
Mr. Woodham?
Oh.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Ms. Lively?
No.
Wow.
Piercy?
No.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Burris?
No.
And Ms. Young?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
Moving on. Resolution 2024-56, a resolution approving the city budget for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Budget discussions just commenced at the committee level during the week of October 21, comprising of city council members and key city personnel. The proposed 25 budget was presented to the city council for discussion at the regularly scheduled council meeting held on November 12th. At the same city council meeting, the city council passed a truth in taxation law resolution with an estimated corporate and special purpose property tax increase of 4.9% over the current fiscal year. Council will be asked to approve the ordinance at your regularly scheduled meeting in December 9th. You guys were provided a draft ordinance at the previous meeting. Levelling taxes for the corporate purposes of the city commencing on January 1 and ending December 31, 2025, an amount of $923,631. General fund budget report ending September 30th of this year indicates nearly $6.3 million in surplus fund revenues over expenditures through September of this year. The September 24 treasures report indicates a general fund balance of 16 and a half million, nearly $1 million in the restricted working cash account. As previously discussed during our budget meetings, and as was the council's desire for our current fiscal year, the proposed budget for FY 2025 reflects a reinvestment of some of those surplus funds back into the city of Monticello general fund operations, capital improvements. I've identified some of those that we have discussed. $35,000 for a new survey truck, $250,000 for another additional payment to the police pension fund. If you recall, we're at 70s per, percent funded now, which is a tremendous accomplishment. $64,000 for a new squad car, $41,000 for new laptops for squad cars, $165,500 for new leaf grass spreader, mini wheel loader, and mini excavator, helping the public works do their daily activities. $1.15 million for pavement rehabilitation. $1.15 million for pavement rehabilitation of Main Street, Independence Street, and the very end of William Street down by the high school parking lot. $2.2 million to finish the PFC Robert C. Burke Memorial Park. Hopefully, we can get some more of that paid yet this year, and it won't be to, quite 2.2 million next year. $8 million for Phase 1 improvements to Oberheim Park is included in this budget tonight. Just so everybody realizes, I was asked to bring, asked the engineers to bring a phased and scaled back version for council's consideration for FY 2025. It was discussed in, in pretty good detail at our last meeting, which is greatly appreciated. $60,500 for improvements to the fire station, and $175,000, $170,000 for improvements to the parking lot behind Subway. Just for clarification, all of that, the salaries were an increase of 3%. And, so, it is recommended the city council review the updated 25 city budget and discuss and approve Resolution 2024-56 as presented.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-56, a resolution approving the city budget for fiscal year 2025?
The move.
Or a second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yes. Did we figure out, Kelly, last time we were met together, Kelly said that there's a chance that we could not use the money that we got for the levy earmarked for Freedom Park and the Oberheim Park. Did we figure that out?
That was right. That was right. It was already figured out.
I was, then I was.
Kelly was not, was traveling and wasn't privy to those conversations, but TIF money cannot be used on anything outside of TIF 2 boundary. Oberheim is outside of TIF 2 boundary.
But this is, but I'm not talking about TIF money, I'm talking about the bond that we certainly bought, that we did, that's what I was talking about.
So, to that point, so, hundreds, there is money that was going to be expended out of TIF 2 to repay that bond. Okay? And money out of the business district fund to pay for that bond, and monies out of general fund. So, it was coming from three different funding mechanisms, the bond payments, okay? I, we cannot use the TIF.
Correct.
For improvements, we can use the TIF money for anything, anything else within that TIF. I cannot use it to, to pay Oberheim Park, I can use the bond money, the $4 million bond, I can use that for Oberheim. The debt payment will not come from TIF 2.
Okay.
The debt payment will come from business district general fund. Does that make sense?
To an extent, yes. Then the other question I had was the previous money that we gave to the Monticello Rec Foundation, the tune of nearly a half a million dollars, is that completely gone?
I think we, I don't know if there's any money left over of that, I don't know right now. I'd have to kinda ask Maura to.
We didn't give them a half a million, we earmarked it.
Correct, yes.
We only spent just under $100,000.
So, there's like 400 somewhere, that, that could be, go to this project to.
That's right, yes, it's still earmarked to go towards the project.
But so that would take, uh, we would have to do something in the council meeting to re-hear mark debt, correct?
So, it's in the general fund reserves?
So, we're already using it out of the reserves?
Yes.
Yeah, fair enough, that's, that's what I had, that's what I was thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I. There's comments. All right, Mike.
I, I just wanna applaud the, the city for, you know, being good stewards of, of the money, I mean, our, the taxes in, in Monticello continue to be among the lowest in the area, and we've done a lot of stuff with, with that money, that we've had conservative budgets over the years. You know, we've done the, the bike and hike trails, we've done Burke Park, we're now taking some money that we've saved to do Oberheim Park, and I think, you know, they should be applauded for, for having a budget that's been conservative enough, and, and we've always had, you know, money left, we've actually been in the black, I think, most, most of those years, and that's the reason we have these reserve funds, and so, I'm thankful for that, and, and I'm hoping that the, the rest of the council, you know, will approve this budget, giving the money that, we talked about in the last meeting, I won't go too far into it, but this is, this is definitely a need for the city, and as John Ferrex noted in his public comment, it, you know, it does, it does, you know, help others, even those that, that may not benefit directly from, from the fields themselves, it certainly is a big asset to the city, and so that the property values of the people that live here.
Thank you, anyone else have a comment or question?
No.
Um, is, would it be possible to go back to Mr. Burris' idea of having a referendum in terms of having voters speak about? I'm just, I've been speaking to a lot of people for the past couple of weeks since we had our last meeting about this, and I'm, there is a lot of confusion about how this park was gonna be paid for. A lot of people thought, you know, the Oberheim, since it's named after that, and the Monticello Rec Foundation is fundraising and stuff like that, most of the people that I spoke to didn't know that the city would be basically funding the whole, whole thing, and so, they pretty much balled at the idea of, you know, all these millions of dollars. So, I mean, I know you got, I've, I've only been on the council for, I don't know, two months, three months, so, um, you know, I'm sure, I guess, all the people that you've spoken with, and all that you're representing and stuff like that, they all are for this park? I'm not sure from the people that I spoke with, so I was thinking, Mr. Burris' idea of referendum, having voters vote, you know, seemed like an idea to me.
I come from a very specialized group, I guess, as a coach, I have a lot of coaching friends, as a parent of, never using it, a lot of the people that I associate with have kids in that same age, I've not heard one negative comment about it, but I'm also aware that I'm very limited in what I'm seeing, and I think that, I'm gonna see, the, the problem with the, the referendum is, if we ask the taxpayers of Monticello to pay $8 million for this through a referendum, it's never gonna fly, it's gonna take their taxes to the roof. And my question would be, why would we? If we have the money in our, in our, in our account, why would we ask them to give more money towards it? We've already, we've already asked for their money, you've already received their money.
Just to answer that question, because we keep, we keep going around this, it's not our money. We saved it in the budget, but it's not our money, we serve the city, the people of the city.
Right.
And to be fair, you need to, to fully understand where I'm talking, where I'm, where I'm coming from, I have to flip my vote. I don't wanna vote yes for it, but I'm gonna have to, because I've talked to constituents, and I've heard them say they want it. Not everybody, but the majority, where I don't think it's the best idea, to be fair, just to be totally open and honest, however, if there's a way to do a referendum to get more, and not Facebook public opinion, but actual people, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. I don't know that that will happen, I don't know that we have the mechanics for that to happen.
I couldn't agree more.
I think the, the feedback you're gonna get from a public opinion is going to be comparable to what we got when we, when we polled the community for the strategic planning, and, you know, I think that's, that's, when we, when we put it out there and we asked for opinions during strategic planning, we got those opinions, and 16.9% of the respondents said that we need more recreation facilities.
How many?
16.9%.
16.9?
Which was the highest percentage.
But it's still not.
It was, it was recreation, it, there was like five different options, or no, I can't remember now what it was, but 16.9% ranked that as their highest or whatever among that group, and that was the highest receiving votes, the other ones were like nine and seven and 11 maybe, so.
I thought we only had 457 people.
You did. So, my question is, how, how do we, how do we ask the community to, to vote on this? Because even if, even if we said, hey, come out and vote at the next election, what percentage of the community votes?
Very small.
And is that a good cross-section of the community? Or is it a very specific age group, or very specific part of the group? I mean, I, I, I feel like we're here tasked with taking our resources, taking our communication with, with our constituents, and we are making the decision, that's why we're sitting here. What do we think?
That is why we're all here, we are.
Right. We've been elected.
Do make the decisions.
Speak on that, so, I just feel like, you know, continuing to go back, and that's the thing is, w- we've, we've spun the wheels for 20 years, and, and gotten nowhere, and I feel like, say, okay, you know what, let's stop, let's take a step back and see whatever, we're just gonna continue to spin them, and then we're gonna be sitting here again next year, and we're gonna be talking about other, other things in other ways.
I agree with what you're saying, you know, that's, that's, the last, the sea, it seems like we've become much more progressive the last eight or nine years, and we don't kick the can down the road and leave it for somebody else to take care of. We've been very diligent about being frugal with taxpayers' money. When you have a surplus, you need to spend the surplus on something, if you're gonna have a surplus, obviously, you need to do something with it, but it's not a money-making operation. And I think we've been, we've done our due diligence, and have planned appropriately, and have budgeted appropriately, and have done a nice job of running in the black, and as a consequence, we have excess funds, and I think this is the perfect place to, to do this. I don't think a referendum is the right, right call, we've talked about this thing, Terry, how many, how many different ways have we talked about this over, in the last eight or nine years? I mean, it's, we've studied it, and studied it, and studied it.
Yeah, but, but the, but the question has always been, can we borrow the money? There could be a referendum if we, if we decided to do that, where we say, hey, this is what we have, we have eight, we can put together $8 million, it doesn't have to come out of your pocket, what do you think? Yes or no? And the only reason I keep, the only reason that that's even an idea in my heart, my mind, is that, yes, we make the decisions, but we do get in circles of people who are like us, and we need to be in circles of people who aren't like us, so we get a better idea on everybody. I mean, we talk about 450 people, 457, excuse me, people responded to that, in a community of 6,000, that's not a good representation of everyone. So, that's, the only reason I think a referendum is important is, is, is we actually need to hear from more people.
I agree with that.
Is there a pass, and I'm just, I'm thinking future, we have an $8 million start, there, I don't think that would preclude us going for a referendum somewhere down the line.
I, and I hear what you're saying, because I, I do believe, once we spent the $8 million, once it's going. I don't know that, I, I know you, you have, you, you said there were people who might give, we're, we're gonna give white heat.
Yeah.
To work on theirs, I don't know that we're gonna see, once the city takes this on, I don't see, we, I don't see anybody coming in beside us and funding it. When we take it on, it becomes ours, and we deal with it. Case in point is Burke Park. Burke Park is a lovely park, and it's gonna be awesome when we get done, and we're spending good money on it, but that's not, there's no money coming from outside of the, the, this budget to fund that. So, when we spend this $8 million, how will we do it? This is ours, and we're gonna have to continue, have to figure, if we're gonna do it better, we're gonna have to come up with the money for it.
And we're gonna have to. I think the difference is Burke Park is, here's the plan, here it is, we're completing it, in this case, here's Phase 1, here's our goals and aspirations.
Yeah, and they'll be.
And then, I think you will have people, more likely, I mean.
It's possible.
You will have.
I won't argue that it won't.
Some people who would, who would step in and help out, and if they don't.
I think attitudes might change.
I, I do, I think, I've always argued that if you, if you just got people out there to see it, and just be around it, there would be more people willing to, to financially get on board. I could be wrong, but.
That's a possibility, I don't, I don't.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to move forward with this, we've been working on this for a long time, we've saved our money, we've budgeted conservatively, we haven't spent all the CPRT money, and we haven't tried to count on that as being part of the operational funds every day, so we've had. Are you calling, Mayor, are you calling the question? I am calling the question, we need to vote on this, I think we need to move ahead, we've been dealing with this forever and ever, we have an opportunity to move ahead, it's been the biggest want, biggest need in this community for the last 15 years, longer we have a chance to do it, let's go. Thank you. Question's been called.
I, I would like to, to address Alder Woman Yoon's point about, you know, outside funding, I mean, I think the, the initial.
Mike?
Yes.
I hate, I hate to interrupt, but the question's been called.
Okay.
I'll have a vote. Yes?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
No.
Great. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Alder Person's report, you got one out there wherever you are. Where are you, Mike?
I'm in, I'm in Nashville, Tennessee.
Nashville, Tennessee, okay. Do you have a report?
You know, I was gonna wish Wendell Brock a happy birthday if he was there, this is his birthday, but.
No, he's not here. He's at Texas Roadhouse.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you, thanks. Eric?
What?
Do you have a report?
Um, I'd say, but I'm gonna keep my mouth shut, so no.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Tucker?
No.
No?
No, sir, I said, fine, thank you.
Elaine?
Happy Thanksgiving.
We should sing, who are you on now? Tom, nothing? Brian?
I'm gonna have to say it, because Mr. Brock's not here, but congratulations to the football team.
That was awesome.
It was really loud yesterday. It was really loud.
Yeah, yeah.
I was, it was.
I was, we had company, I couldn't go to the game, but I was out on the back, on the deck, cooking out, and I heard all the cheer, I heard, I could hear Wendell, I could hear the cheering.
You even lived further from me, really?
Yeah, it really, it got loud there.
It was really loud.
But yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun, and thank you to these young men for coming up their evening from Long Island. Hopefully, you're ready tonight, so.
I know, there's one too, I passed my bedtime. Cole?
No, sir.
Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. We have, we have. Chiefs, we have a good word.
You have what?
We did get word the DMV was hit again last night, so it's waiting close for at least some time, we aren't sure how long.
Wait, you mean hit like, somebody ran into the building?
Yeah, they were.
They, they hit what?
DMV.
We're trying to get them to sign us.
What a place to hit.
Right?
We're never gonna like it.
Did you pass?
I was at the second.
I'd like to elaborate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did they pass? Pardon? Did they pass?
It was yesterday, so I guess they're just, they're early for their test.
Or they left, or they left Casa Real?
No, no, they were just learning, I think. A little, I mean, that football game Saturday was awesome. You weren't gonna find a better atmosphere for that, that was frickin' awesome. I don't know how many, I haven't talked to Sheehan, I'll talk to him tomorrow, I don't know how many tickets were sold, but I bet you we had every bit of 2,500 people there, if not more, it was.
It was packed.
It was awesome. That being said, our new body cams are working fantastic. That being said, our new body cameras are working fantastic. A little note to those out there listening, gonna listen to this later. We record everything, I love that fact. State of Illinois pretty much tells us what to record, what not to record. At some point, I can guarantee you, they'll probably be having us upload this on YouTube, some sort of state website, take your pick. That being said, if we record things, sometimes we get people at their worst. And that's just the nature of police work, so, uh, what we've tried to tell people is when we tell you we're recording, we aren't picking and choosing when, it's, we're getting the whole picture. So, uh, sometimes there's some unintended consequences.
So you're doing it now?
No.
Okay.
No, we've got others for that. But just kind of a, a fair warning on that, just because, uh, no major issues at that game, which wasn't bad for kind of the rivalry we had. I do want to call out an officer, we, we've had a lot of good attaboys over the last week or so for different officers. Officer Foreman, uh, got a, uh, one today for helping the sheriff's office kind of close out a report. And he and I had, I guess you'd call it a domestic issue that originated at the game and then kind of went out. Officer Foreman kind of bears the brow sometimes on some of the people that aren't so much from around here. He's been called derogatory terms and he just laughs it off. He's a better person than I. Uh, he's one heck of an officer. He was accused on one of the local social media pages of parking his squad car and not being in it, which was a false statement. He's just one of the, a real good officer and proud to have him here, I really am. All, all my officers are really good, again, like I said, quite a few of them got attaboys this week, so they're really pulling it together, you know, we see the light at the end tunnel with some of our new hires, so we're really excited about it, not as excited as the neighbors on the 700 block of East Grant Street because that house is.
It's raised. It's been raised.
That house shouldn't be a problem.
Oh.
That is? Thank you.
You do.
In case you need a, if you wanted one of his junior police badges, I think if you ask him afterwards, he'd be glad to give it.
Why are you looking at me?
Okay, it says, city administrators report. I have nothing tonight.
Ooh.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
There's a move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, I?
Hi.
You and a couple, you'll see, yeah, see you on the 9th.
Yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, all right, everybody enjoy the Thanksgiving.